I think that's pretty much it. We've talked about, again, in the letter already, we've talked about how far as there can be cleared, a lot of dead trees, things like that, really should be cleared out. There's a couple that can actually hit our house, which is not exciting, maybe a little too exciting. And so, that's it. That's what I want to say. And we have a little bit of the ash to our stone, maybe 100 square feet, we'll donate it to the cause. But I'm not sure if it's a perfect match, but it was native, it was somewhere on the property and then upon our property. We harvested it, put it somewhere, so if that wants to be used, we'll contribute that to the cause, as they say. Anyway, we look forward to this budget on the side. Good evening, Richard, Ken, Ian, and Konstantino. Having heard, excuse me, having heard the discussion of the substantial changes in the application and contemplation of the public hearing on June 2nd, that there's no point in making substantive comments. My client, Aster Courts, through its consultants, will review the alunus application. To the extent we have concerns, it's my intention to communicate to the applicant prior to the public hearing through the general's office. I'm hoping we can be here on June 2nd in substantial agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else this evening? All right, Ian, please. Yes?
Just the C A B, hi, Ryan, I'm the Chair of C A B. With the planners here, could they point out the treatment facility on the property and which stage that the works for our B N wants in discharge?
I believe it's a subdivision of the local subdivision.
Yes, Joe Berger, our engineer, is here tonight and is going to be working with the Health Department in the next couple of weeks, so that when we're here on June 2nd, we'll be presenting to you alternatives as to how that would be, how the treatment would take place. So, we will address that. And we'll provide that to the C A B.
Okay. I will read the resolution, which will set us up for next month.
...in the style of architecture in Rhine Cliff that won't be replicated with the new building, the brand new building. So just to get that out there, that we know there are concerns about that, that some people are not wanting to see something so different than what they see around them in Rhine Cliff.
But that's why we want the high hedge so that it's, no one has to look at it, but the original building will be seen from the street.
I do, I do understand that, but since there's going to be continuing discussion about the hedge, I think those two things, you know, interconnected somewhere down the line.
The next one is continue existing residential character of the hamlet with special attention given to architectural design, lighting, landscaping, streetscapes, pedestrian amenities, and signage. And we have, well, C, C one above regarding landscape via previously submitted photos establishing proposed hedges consistent with the many existing hedges along streets in the RCO district. I guess this is where we start to get a little bit more into basically the design of the building, which I think has been somewhat controversial, of the addition of the new part. Basically, when you go through Rhine Cliff, any sort of flat type buildings, whether they're basically the business district down there, you know, the firehouse in that area in there, without the residential district, just because of when these things are built and things like that, they're all basically more traditional, you know, gable type roofs, things of that sort. Which raises one of the issues for the planning board to discuss, you know, whether or not this, this issue, and I guess we get into it again later, I guess there's a specific objective on this, does this come into, come into play, if it's something we really need to seriously look at? Just so everyone knows, as I did speak with our attorney, John Lyons, about this, and he said, since the town board decided it's a shall, the town planning board is an administrative body, we're not quasi judicial or legislative, is bound to address our position of minister of the law as written and as interpreted, either because of zoning enforcement or because of previous use or things like that, if necessary. So that does become a question. I know a number of people, in terms of streetscapes, have spoken about, specifically the hedge in terms of being something that's blocking certainly views of the building, but also views through it of the mountains and the river as part of the streetscape. I know that that's been one of the concerns that some people have raised. I know on the other hand, the offer to preserve that northern lot as completely undeveloped with just a small sort of demarcation wall, let's say, as opposed to a hedge or something like that. I think one could argue, to some extent, certainly offsets. But the problem I have is I don't know to what extent we have the ability to look at offsets of that sort, given the way they worded the law. I think that's something the planning board has to decide how we feel about going forward with that. That's something that I think-
This is under number two you're, you're referring, right?
This is under number two, yes.
Now, again, just interpreting this, I agree with Melody that number one, it is more about our zoning law reads, preserve Rhine Cliff's architecture, but it also adds and pattern of design. Pattern of design is all about change, so it comes down to us to decide, is it too much if it really is a problem for everybody? But number two is not talk, talks about giving special attention to lighting, landscaping, and streetscapes. It doesn't prohibit anything. It says give special attention. I, I don't think anyone can deny they've given special attention. I mean, if we're going to follow it to what we're bound by, you need to go by what it's at.
I agree.
Well, I think the special attention that Michael's referring to is the landscaping and the streetscape.
Right, but let's not mix that up with view. That has nothing to do with views, number two.
Streetscape actually do, that's a streetscape, and that is a view. That's what streetscapes are, that's what they appear.
This is landscaping for, to make it pleasurable to walk down the street. I mean, there's a whole lot that's open, you're passing a nice manicured lawn, house. It is, it is all the big picture, I get it, but it's not about prohibiting.
No, I'm not saying prohibiting it, but it has to be-
I just, I want to make sure, you know, I'm reading this the same way, that's okay.
The streetscape along Grinnell obviously includes the views of the mountain and the river, and that's, you know, that's where it is. Where you and I live, Wurtenbergers Lake quarry, we don't have bottoms and river. The streetscape's totally different.
Well, there are some parts of Grinnell Street that are, like have trees and stuff blocking the river, so it would set a precedent, and it would mean that, like, you know, like all those lands near the station and stuff like that that have high hedges, and already all over there are high hedges in Rhine Cliff, it would mean that everyone would have to take down their high hedges.
That's why, as I, there's not a prohibition, it's you have to give special attention to it. So that's basically what we're trying to do here. Anything more on number two? Number three?
Well, let's, yeah, let's go back to the building itself. Forget the hedging. I have concern about the building because it's not the only one in Rhine Cliff that's a cube type structure. There are two major, large buildings with a stone strophe in the railroad station that are modernistic beyond compare, okay? If we tell these people they cannot do that, put a square box in there, and take my terminology, not as, not as an observa, a comment, but just an observation.
So would he, isn't it?
Okay. I think we're opening the town up to a real curmudgeon because there've been some precedents that have been set in that community already.
And some of them predated-
And ones on Grinnell, I believe, the one as you start at the hill past the hotel and on the left-hand side, it's, it's huge.
Do they predate the new zone?
I think that predates the new zone.
I don't know, but the one across from the, from the, from the train station does not. That I can tell, going up the hill, the little narrow street, because of the, definitely dark. So I think, I think, no matter which way you go, we've got some open switches that we're probably going to have to get some real technical, real advice on.
No, I, I, I agree.
We're, we're going to open a Pandora's box.
So I think we have to, no matter what we do, we'll be doing that.
Yeah.
It, it, it never says anywhere, it never prohibits.
Correct.
No.
It doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
And it, it says, it says it should be sympathetic. Is that the way to use it?
I think so.
That's a mush word, but that's a word. I think we come to that.
My sympathetic and your sympathetic are the same.
My sympathetic is in that, yes. I think actually that's more specific.
It is more specifically stated, yes, as we move along.
I think we'll get to that.
Okay. I think number three basically doesn't apply so much. It's a-
For the public, that has to do with pedestrian safety.
Yeah.
You see it on the sheets I passed out.
I think that doesn't, no, I don't think it does.
Well, actually, pedestrian safety does, is involved, and it's a plus on there if you have, because if you want to put a wall up to keep the pedestrian from wandering out on your property and falling over.
There are sections that talk about the roadway and keeping it small, and so they're not, the only thing you can say there is you're not really doing any changes or anything to the roadway.
True, true. Okay. Improve the visual characteristics of the hamlet by implementing landscaping standards. Landscaping should enhance views from the hamlet to the Hudson River and Catsfield Mountains in Vienna.
That's a-
And let me read what Steve has here. Hedges are used to screen the view from the street and provide privacy for the applicant. Without the hedges, the view west from the street would still be blocked but by a building rather than a hedge. The hedge is a very attractive, community-friendly way to screen a property. Special consideration has been given to the Hudson River view from the street, and most especially from the houses across Grinnell. The best views by far have been left completely open, and the application's been made with the offer of illegally bound, that that will remain open in perpetuity. Alternative schemes would simply require more buildings rather than hedges to satisfy the applicant's space needs and to provide privacy. The scheme has been conceived to give maximum amenity to a community while satisfying the applicant's needs. I guess one question I had, is it absolutely necessary that the hedge be so high to screen the building, but a shorter hedge provide the privacy that you want between the new addition and the existing building?
I think that the, I'm sorry, but the, the height of the hedge to give me privacy, the person wouldn't be able to see over it anyway. If it were eight feet, I'm, I'm not sure that it would block the building, but someone wouldn't be, it wouldn't solve the problem that it's being-
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if it were seven or eight feet, that would be fine. We made it eleven because we didn't want to see the building to be seen, for the reason I have, you know.
I guess the question, and I guess this is more of a pragmatic question, depending on what material you use to make an eleven, just maintaining it, you know, the weather you have up there, the wind, the storm, things like that. I mean, eleven is awfully high to have right on riverfront where the wind is going to be. And I was thinking of it more along a pragmatic thing of preserving it as opposed to, you know, something else, depending on what you make it out of.
It sounds as if you've considered a shorter hedge at times.
Yes, I, the, the height of the hedge was established, the building's eleven feet, so I said, the hedge is eleven feet. It doesn't need to be.
What would you need for privacy? Because I guess if the water goes down into that area there, what would you need for privacy?
I don't know. That's sort of like a formula that, I don't know.
Maybe like, six feet be enough?
No, six feet wouldn't be enough, but-
Because the road is high, and then it goes down, and then it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
The privacy you're looking for is primarily into the structure or a person between hedging and the structure, correct? As part of, right? Okay. Well, if eight feet is an arbitrary number, would, I would think, would cover most of your windows, if not all of them, and certainly nobody's going to be, nobody's head's going to be bobbing above the eight-foot hedge.
I, I haven't thought of that.
It just, you know, just-
Even, even shorter than that, six foot would give you privacy, but now, when is the sight shot? Six-foot person walks by on the road and looks over, how high does it need to be to cover that new structure that everybody sees to have some-
We're going to have to figure that out. But, but isn't it, but here's my question. If the person is getting privacy from the hedge, and no one can look over the hedge, then why does it matter in a way how tall it is? Because it's sort of blocking-
Personally, I think it's just more, we're boding at eleven feet than it is at six. That's just my personal reaction. If something is that tall and that big, it just seems bigger.
If you're not going to worry about your flat roof on the additional buildings, which we're, you know, going to try and somehow, you know, make peace with that, is it so essential from the street to hide it? Because basically also it's from the river is also important. River views, you're going to see it from the river, so it seems that a lot of the discussion of the hedge has been just the size of it. And, you know, I'm thinking just in terms of maintaining something like that is also an issue.
This is a question that I haven't even talked about with Steve, but I mean, is the board more amenable to like a wall?
No, no, I don't think that's, that's the thing at all. I think there's something that just, I think Melody does make a good point here, that an eleven-foot hedge really does seem more of a-
It's twice my height.
It's more intimidating.
It's twice my height.
It gives a, it gives a more, I mean, massive amount. And whatever you could have done to make that look not as foreboding-
At what height, at six, eight?
Could we, could we like figure it out?
Had you, had you considered any interruptions in this solid hedge?
I think he's trying to hide the building if you give it-
Well, yes, it's, the, the hedge is going right to the terrace.
It's, it's like a very narrow, you know, honestly, and this sounds completely self-serving, but for a year, I looked at that property before I bought it, I sort of stalked that property, and I never thought of the view that we're talking about as the view, I never even thought of it. I always went like a little past the house and saw that open view, and for me, that, that's always been the view. And so I'm a little surprised that, but I understand what you're talking about, you're talking about like sort of the proportion.
Yeah, I just think, maybe just, you know, for the public hearing, I mean, just for me, anyway, if you could propose a height that gives you the privacy, let's not worry about hiding the building. Privacy, what do you need to give you the privacy that you, that you require there?
And I'd like to, as you walk along there, I'd like to just answer the question, and maybe you can, as to whether or not if this hedge were not solid, but was, were, was interrupting certain points with views through that are like this, is, I don't know, it can be accomplished.
Can I say something, just as the, here's where I mentioned for the culturalist, one of the things that's done when a hedge is a wall, to mitigate the look of this massive wall, is what's called stack planting. So in front of the hedge, you have something a bit smaller, perhaps rhododendrons, in front of that, you have azaleas, and so what it looks like, rather than this wall, is you have, looks like the beginning of a wood, it looks like the beginning of something that sort of goes on, which is a great way to mitigate that sort of wall that seems to be the, the problem.
We've got a project there.
Yeah, I mean, sure, it can be different things, but rather, rather than having this wall of foliage, you have something that's, you know, that's floral and so forth. So, I mean, I think that's a great way to go. It's what's oftentimes done when you use screening around the edge of a property. What you do is you have stack planting, so rather than having the ninety-degree perpendicular wall, you have more of a gradual natural sort of build-up to it.
You've got to-
They can come back with that. They can come back with that. But I'm starting to hear that there could be a little more openness to this than I think what-
Well, it doesn't have to be a solid wall that's, that's a square or boding sort of thing, can be done, you know, et cetera. And it can even be mixed foliage, so that, again, looks like something that's a bit more natural with different color evergreens, obviously evergreen, but, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I think going back to the eleven-foot discretion, I think that's the first thing that everybody likes, oh my God, you know, it's up to the sky.
Because you're over six foot, doesn't mean it's done this far. Like I said, that's twice my height, so.
When you're redoing the basement, I'm how, you just dropped everything another four foot?
I don't think it works that way.
I get the impression that privacy wise for that outdoor area, you're not trying to block off your windows from the house and pods of the building.
Well, I'm trying to make it so that you can't see in the house, and so that you can have the outdoor area that's just, you know, for me.
The, the road is about, I think it may be thirty inches above what would be the terrace height, or maybe even three feet. So that's what, the person on the road obviously is going to stay higher. I'm, I'm thinking seven, eight feet would do it, but I don't think, I'm sure six would do it.
Maybe you could come back with a couple renditions of eleven foot and the seven, something like that, just-
With specific plant material.
Yeah, with plant material, and I think I asked if we have a good advice there about some mixed, in a certain, actually, in and of itself, it becomes something attractive rather than just a, a functional barrier, visual barrier. Because it could be probably done very beautifully. I know that up in Clayton, up here, there's a piece of property off a townhouse in the St. Lawrence River, and they can spit and hit it, and they have a beautiful mixed planting there just to try and screen there, and it's actually in and of itself, it's very, very lovely. It worked very nicely, it worked very nicely.
And if I recall correctly, in that particular item on, in the list of items, they switch from shall to should.
Oh, they probably do within the-
Actually, actually, the preamble though, to that entire section, should.
It's a shall.
But now it goes to should here.
So we shall, we should, and we shall.
It does, and I, I have a problem with the whole interpretation of that number four. I mean, what is by implementing landscaping standards? We don't have any standards. Who's standard, though, we've got?
Good question.
And it's, so that's what number four is about. It's about implementing landscaping standards. The second sentence is referring back to the first, and that's why it's in the same thing. It says landscaping should enhance the views, not, anything about blocking, it's talking about enhancing the views.
And that's what we're discussing.
Right. So, but it, you know, nowhere does it say it can't block it, so this is on a very, the objective of the overall, maintain the, the view of the river and the Catsfield. I don't see where number four is, is where we're looking at for those, for the view thing anyway.
I think we're looking at number four because we were discussing eleven-foot thing being intimidating. We're discussing the size, the height of the-
So of that hedge.
Hedge itself, and what characteristics it could have in and of itself to be visually attractive.
How much, when a hedge goes in, how far is it from the hedge to the edge of the road? Or you have the driveway there.
Yeah, the driveway's there. I think it's about twenty-five feet from the, from the edge of the actual paved road to the hedge.
So you'd have some room to do some work. It wouldn't necessarily have that stage look all the way along the hedge, but maybe at one side of it, that it then works into it, and then it basically sort of offsets.
Well, the difficulty is getting the driveways in there.
Oh, you'd still be able to get the driveways in, but to work around that, rather than just have everything just go like that, you could maybe have one area there that fills up.
But you're going, you're going down, are you still dropping the garage?
No, we're, we're leaving the garage now, as it is.
You're only access to the garage, the way it is, doors will be on the street side, not that right?
I think that you have the expertise to do some very creative work with this hedge, so I'm sure we'll-
Also, I'd just like to mention that you, you could argue, in terms of the way that's stated, that the use of the hedge enhances the view in the sense that it permits the rest of the view to be open.
That's a good, and I think if it's designed properly, the proper plant material sizing and whatnot, the hedge itself can be attractive, rather than just functioning as a barrier. And I think that can certainly be done. I mean, that's very often in the landscaping, is as important a structure as the structure itself. I was a gardener, not a-
So along the same lines of, of landscaping, on the plan, you're going to put some kind of stone wall. Is it possible to talk to John and his wife so that they can visually look at this before it even comes back here, if he comes back?
The whole, the whole purpose of opening, you know, keeping that open is not to block John or-
Correct, no, but he's very concerned with the height.
Yes, and of course, that will be taken into consideration. I don't want to block him or her in any way that, I want to leave it open, but I do want just a demarcation so that people don't come on the property, which they do all the time.
Well, I think that wall, as I said before, on the, on the south end, is more than adequate for what you're trying to require. And I think it'll fit into his visuals.
Yeah, I know what I meant, his visuals. I'm, you know, I'm not going to do that.
Okay, moving right along, I think that number five doesn't apply about signage, and I can do the signage.
Well, the new sign, you wanted to put on the roof?
I like the new, I like the new.
Is it going to be diamond?
Design the height of new buildings to consist of, never, even unless you're fully doing that, you're maintaining the garage at its current height, and the other building, the new one, is going to be shorter actually than the existing. Okay, this is the one where we always have problems. Design roofs to be sympathetic with the vernacular architecture. And this is where the planning board sort of has to decide. I think in Rhine Cliff, vernacular architecture, and the residential area obviously is, you know, gable roofs like that, it's rather, they're not flat, in the business district, of course, there are the flat roofs and things like that.
Something that may concern the motion, if it does leak.
Yes. And that's, I guess that's the only one that, just from a strictly legal standpoint, that I've been hung up on myself. Because from the river, you're going to see this, some, obviously, otherwise you're not going to have your views if you can't, they can't see you, you're not going to be able to see how.
Well, actually, like, when I went across to the housing development, and when I, and I've been on the river a lot, on the riverboat, on the coast guard boats, the profile of this is going to be so, it's because it's going to be the narrow end of it, it's not going to be like this big lawn thing, it's just going to be the narrow end of it. It's going to be really perturbative to, to what you see on the river.
We're talking about number seven?
Mm-hmm.
How, how would a flat roof, how would anyone be offended about the roof part of it from the river?
Basically, that's not the question. The question is, design must be sympathetic with the vernacular architecture, which means what is the basic vernacular architecture of Rhine Cliff throughout the residential district? What is it?
It's not a flat roof building.
But, but since we're going to put a hedge which isn't too high, and we are leaving, you know, what, what, that was what we were trying to address when we took off the wing that left the salt box, that was the eighteen hundreds house, that's what you, you would see from the street. So if that, I mean, as long as you see that from the street and you don't really see the other one, it's not offended.
From the river is also important. Basically, when they do these designations, the scenic district and whatnot, is basically what you see from the river. I mean, that's what Rhine Cliff, basically, as you see it as a whole, you see it from the river, you see that pattern, you see what makes Rhine Cliff, you see it from the river.
Well, if the roof is, if the roof is the, you know, if the roof is the thing, I mean, if you're talking about glass, there's houses that have huge expanses of glass on the river that are going to be so, there are so much more obvious.
Oh, I agree.
You know, but this is going to be such a, it's going to be a one-story profile. It's, I mean, my house now looks hulking from the river.
But that's basically what it always was. The problem, once again, and this is strictly from the procedural legal standpoint, you were in the Rhine Cliff overlay district, but then we see it is how, you're not in that district, so the restrictions which apply here in this area didn't apply to what you were doing. Obviously, what you wanted to do there, then it works beautifully for you, probably would have been problematic in that in this overlay district itself, just given the, given the objectives.
Steve, have you ever considered any kind of a pitch to the roof of this? I mean, I know, I'm not trying to be critical of what you like, I'm just asking that rhetorically.
Well, no, well, for one, one thing, we kept it low in the beginning because we didn't want to block the hairwoods. So we put a roof on there, we-
I didn't say that, I just ask if it was ever a consideration.
And then the other thing is, the, the character of the space, it's, the roof is an expression of the, the nature of the space. It, to, to put a, a roof, a pitch roof on there would be just adding something to be decorative. It would be sort of, and decorative and moderns don't go together.
Can I ask you, you have the legal, from a legal point, you have a word sympathetic in there. I mean, it's, it's open for a lot in terms of-
Yes, it is.
But vernacular is the stronger word for me.
Pardon?
Vernacular is the stronger word for me, not sympathetic.
Well, it is, but sympathetic is stated first in the sentence, so from a legal, legal sense, it would be the stronger word, they would.
But you go back to the introduction, it shall, so.
Shall be sympathetic.
But it's also defining what it should be sympathetic with, and it's with the vernacular architecture.
So I'm, I'm simply saying, from, from our point of view, we don't have our hands tied.
No.
That's why we're here.
You, you never read my response to that?
Oh.
This is a time.
Sympathetic is a highly subjective term. Forms do not have to mimic or imitate one another to be sympathetic. What could be more sympathetic than the relationship of the highly contrasting round forms at the Guggenheim Museum and the surrounding rectangular forms of the apartment building? We find the proposed roof shapes to be sympathetic with those of surrounding buildings, especially to those of the elaborate brick buildings in really across Grinnell Street. And certainly in the, the business district, things like that, obviously, clap rooms are quite common. In the residential, it tends not to be. The issue becomes sympathetic.
It's also mentioned in the, in the introduction to the whole, the whole set of rules for the, you know, the district, I think right in the beginning, it says that, that we, that, I've forgotten exactly how they put it, but it's, this, nothing, it's not intended to just, we want to encourage new creative design.
I think, I think I know what you're saying.
It's, they don't want to discourage new creative design.
Steve, on the natural pitch, if you're going to put some pitch on that roof, which way is it going? Toward the river or waiting room? I mean, you got to put some pitch on it.
Yeah, it's going, it's sloping to the south.
Oh, okay.
The gutter is that way. But it's a verse.
Oh, I see.
You would, you would see the slope.
In essence, you will not, with the current design, you would not see the roof, all you would see is the, the end of the wall, the building. You would not see the roof at all.
That's right. There's a very low parapet, just a couple inches.
Do we want to discuss sympathetic roofs anymore?
No.
Yeah? Said the banker. Kido. Eight, utilize traditional building materials. And, wait a minute. Proposed materials, clapboard siding, and stuff are traditional building materials. I think one, one thing that I've, I've heard discussed is that much of the new addition is actually glass, which-
Glasses and- But glasses are traditional building materials.
It isn't needed traditional building material. But in the buildings in that area, obviously, it's not overwhelming to view. So that, just once again, just because...
So we shall, we shall utilize traditional building materials does not mean you can't use other materials as well. It just means that you shall utilize traditional materials. Which they are doing extensively in the renovation of the existing homes.
No, but actually, if you shall do something, that means you shall use traditional, you will not be using other materials.
What's wrong?
No, it does not, it does not. It does not mean that, it means you shall use it. It does not mean restricted from using something else. It means you will use traditional building materials. All right, I'm reading it, reading it how it's said.
I'm afraid I can't understand the distinction between you gentlemen are making between you shall use traditional building materials, but you don't have to use traditional building materials. I see that as a logical contradiction.
What they're saying, in any building material today, what is not traditional?
The vinyl siding.
Spray paint.
Vinyl siding.
I bet you have to count, houses in Rhine Cliff have vinyl siding.
But they protect the sun. They protect the sun. And between what it was, I think that's what it's referring to.
Yeah, I understand what it is.
Traditional materials and glass is a traditional material.
And granted, it's not terribly well defined. So, limit the square footage of the new dwellings and the expansion of existing ones to prevent oversized out-of-character homes in order to maintain the most desirable characteristics of the hamlet and prevent alteration of the historic character of Rhine Cliff.
That's the matter before the CBA.
That's not exactly, but, and beyond that, although we shall look at it. I think that what's happened tonight, you have reduced the size of the arch clearly. I think the way that you're trying to put the two buildings together is so that it does not look like one contiguous, continue, contiguous structure, I guess I would say, I think the hedge plays a role in that. I don't really personally see a problem here with this. Anyone else?
I think there's one more, I think you did say that.
Yeah, I do. I think number ten, you've already responded to. Prevent building of second or third-story additions to one or two-story buildings when it would result in a structure that is out of character with the buildings surrounding it or results in a visual intrusion of a neighboring property. You clearly responded to that. Prevent the construction of a large building built to replace a portion or all of a demolished one which may be out of scale with the surrounding buildings. The scale, once again, seems to be working. Plan for accommodation of automobile, well, on your traffic, rent, pedestrian comfort and safety are of the utmost importance. I guess from what you've said tonight, the second floor is coming off the garage. We're going to try and work around, work the hedge into a more humanly comfortable thing. Are you going to consolidate the three lots and then put a conservation unit on that third lot? How are you going to?
Well, if they're consolidated, then they're all one lot and you can't build another one on it. Am I incorrect?
Well, you could potentially expand onto it.
You'd have to, you'd have to come in front of the board to do that.
Sure.
And at that point, the board would say, no.
Well, they have to justify that. I'm just wondering, will there be any instrument to, because it says preserve in perpetuity, that generally...
Let's service this anyway.
Only if, if they're offering it to the planning board as a condition, as a concession to try and get their approval.
They're offering this concession.
The planning board has to consider whether what is being offered is indeed...
I personally feel like it's a consolidation.
It's the way or not they choose to impose a conservation somewhere, some of that sort on their property. It has tax implications, it has discussed with the board, and it should not be discussed here.
Then the board, then should the board or can the board consider it as a, something that's being...
Consolidation achieves the, achieves the objective.
I agree with Art. I think consolidating, they've already, they've put themselves in a restrictive position already. I mean, we're not going to let them subdivide that property in future.
Will there then be a restriction in whatever special permit we do offer, saying there could be no further expansion of structures on the new consolidated three, the new lot?
I'd be fine with that. Give us square footage, or some existing square footage on the property. If they decided to rip one down or something, or rip them both down, you know.
But if they consolidate the lots, say, for whatever reason, someone ripped down the new addition going onto the south lot and decided they want to build onto the north lot.
I think they should be subject to our zoning laws, because they consolidate the property.
And they then have rights to construct accessory structures or whatever to the extent that are allowable under the zoning law.
So in that case, at least from my perspective, I don't think you can then consider consolidation as preserving in perpetuity, because, as offered, because it doesn't. I think, by the way, what you both just said, it obviously doesn't. Our zoning law does not do that.
Okay, I'll say that, but I think it still accomplishes what everyone here wants.
In the near term, yes. In the long term, not necessarily. And the zoning law may change at some future point in time, it may permit larger structures, things of that sort.
Well...
I'm just pointing out, I'm just pointing out that we shouldn't, well, the problem only is that we do not accept it as being preserved as an open space in perpetuity. That we understand that's not the case.
I think the planning board is in no position to request or push for an easement to the property. That's up to the owner.
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that.
I know, but I just want to make sure, we should not put ourselves in a position where we even ask for that because they have no obligation to do that. If they want it to and want it to work in favor, that's great. I'm sure everyone around them would love it.
I agree, I just, I'm not myself going to say that consolidation preserves that in perpetuity as offered in your letter, as open space, because it doesn't. And I think we need to understand that, that's all.
Correct.
But the planning board's not asked to make that judgment as to whether it's being preserved in perpetuity, because that's not a requirement of any...
I'm not saying it's a requirement, I'm saying it's being offered as one of the concessions, if you want to say, to approve the project.
Consolidation is what's been offered. Consolidation is what's been offered.
But to preserve in perpetuity was the words used in the letter, referred to the consolidation. So I think we strike that from what's offered, and that's fine.
Well, you're not striking it from her letter, because that was what she said.
Well, that was your letter.
That doesn't get striked, but you're just clarifying for the public.
Right.
Is it, is it fair for us to say that that's something she can, obviously, she's talking about with Steve right now, that's something she can come back to us with if she wants?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I just don't want the public...
You're not, you're not required.
Not at all, not at all.
And there's no reason to be beating it to death tonight, we're going away and we're going to have further conversations.
No, I agree. And I, and I think your intent here is absolutely, is very, very good. I just don't want us to give the public the impression that something is being done when it isn't necessarily being done and we can't require that it be done. That's all.
I actually thought that in combining the lots, it would mean that another house could be built there.
You are giving up the right to another principal structure on the property. You're not giving up the right to develop accessory structures to the extent that they're allowable under the zoning law. Which, which means, which means as a, for instance, in light of a, I'm not sure if it's, if it's true in this district, but it probably is, you could have one guest cottage as a, for instance, as was discussed in the case of the Duffy situation.
Or you chose to put up, you know, greenhouse, something like that. Things, accessory structures can still be permitted to you to do on that, on that lot.
Giving up the right to a, to a second principal building.
But not to construction on that portion of the property.
Isn't, is just one accessory structure to make this difference?
It could, it could be.
I thought it was just one.
Whatever it is.
Well, you could get it...
But you're going to take down the garage and then...
So if we go back and add the second floor in a garage, that will restrict you from doing anything further to the north.
Let's take it to the right, yeah.
But anyway, I just don't want anyone going over the...
No, dude, I think you're right, we have kind of beaten this.
Yeah, so how do you all feel? Do you feel that if we were given, given what's been said tonight, the changes in the plan that's being proposed, that we would be perfectly justified in saying that the objectives are being met? We shall have met the objectives that we shall meet for the issues of the special use plan. I think that's, that's the question we have to decide.
I think the reasonableness is there. I think the combining of the three lots is an owner's decision. It is in their best interest, probably, at this juncture to do so. Whether they choose to do it is up to themselves.
Well, we've already committed to that.
But you're going to come back to us with a revised set of plans. And at that point, yeah, no, if that's what we're coming back to, I think everybody should be very happy with it.
The revised subdivision application for the three lots. Some revision of the application for the special use, you know, for the garage no longer having a second store. Obviously, more detail about the development of the hedge, exactly what it's going to consist of and how it's going to be, you know, sized, whatnot.
Withdraw the application for the detached accessory.
Right, so you won't be damaging that. Just the design of what you want to do on that third lot in terms of a demarcation, stone demarcation of some sort.
And I think the husband has a project that he just volunteered for.
I think that since, I think we will learn that looking at these criteria, it's important to our review of projects in Rhine Cliff. And I think we leave this project application more committed to keep making sure that we go over these points when we're looking at development in Rhine Cliff. Because, as I've said before, these things are in here because the residents of Rhine Cliff argued for these things strenuously in the development of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. So we would be remiss if we weren't looking at them and having the type of discussion that we're having tonight. So I think as we're writing up whatever, I mean, I agree that a great number of concessions have been made. Would I like to see some things differently? Yes, but I think the applicant and Steve have gone a long way toward, toward making this a better application for us and a better application for the residents of Rhine Cliff. But I think we need to make sure that we are writing this up in such a way that we're making clear that if we're willing, if we're willing to look at this in a different light, let's be sure we're saying why we're doing it and making sure that we understand they're going back to the drawing board, they're going to look at this hedge, not staying a wall, that it gets to be much more visually attractive to pedestrians and others on the street. And I appreciate the willingness to go back and look at that.
And incorporate this into each and every applicant and at least give it a quick once-over. By the time we have some...
No, we do, I think we talked about that at the conclusion of last one's meeting. You know, this has been an important exercise for us. And I think it's, it's been important to hear from the residents of Rhine Cliff. And we appreciate your coming on and we hope, we hope that some of the decisions that we're making will also be satisfactory to you.
Absolutely, I, it's, for me, it's been a very valuable exercise.
I'm so glad.
Steve and I have had some wonderful discussions.
On how you described baggage.
Do you need more exercise? Do you need more exercise?
You know, I actually myself ask, you know, representatives of Hudson River Heritage, because this is, it's a challenging problem and I'm sensitive to it. And I wish there were better design guidelines and standards for new construction within the Landmark District. They don't, they don't exist. So there's not really anything for us to be looking at to compare it to. And I think it would be a good undertaking for an organization like that to, to do a bit of work, to point out to planners, not just here, but in other communities in the Landmark District, how do you integrate modern design concepts into vernacular architecture? Because Rhine Cliff is about as vernacular as something can get. So, you know, if you can encourage people to help us along that line or work in that direction, it would be a good thing.
And you really have worked with us and you've made a lot of concessions, I think, and that's very much appreciated. No, no, it really is. I mean, given the legal restraints for that particular, it is very, very difficult. And granted, a lot of this stuff is very, very subjective, there's no question. I think a lot of the steps you've taken, you know, in the last couple of weeks have really made it certainly easier for me to say, yeah, this should be okay. Work on the hedge. I thought Queen Anne's Garden in Regent Park is really nice.
The key thing in working on the hedge is don't any longer call it a hedge.
Yeah, right.
Because conceptually, you're not talking about a hedge. Talking about a very different kind, a different kind of planning and different kind of expression.
We're going to make an orviria.
Oh, screening, yeah.
Anyway, and so I really much appreciate it.
It's a lesson to the thirty-threeers.
So I think that, are we, you'll be coming back with revised plans, obviously, if some things have changed and what the lands could be...
This is on June...
And June 2nd, I think, is when we pick up on the public hearing, isn't it?
June 2nd, you pick up on the public hearing, I think you're going to be, if you're, if you're favorably impressed with the revised presentation and maybe in a position of actually moving forward with a secret determination so that the CBA, with the areas of variance, at least with respect to the square footage of the...
Given tonight, do you feel you have sufficient information to draft...
I introduce a drafting, introduce a drafting.
Well, that's being provided, isn't it, through the health department in terms of test the S and everything?
Well, it happens to be before, but that's part of building...
No, the, no, the site plan approval, for the planning board requires stamp plans.
For the septic?
Or all elements of the...
Because for one thing, it changed, it changed now. With the new garage, we were going to need a new septic system.
Right, exactly.
Without that garage, we probably don't need it.
No, you probably don't, and that's fine, we just, probably just sign off from the health department.
So nothing's going to happen to the garage, it's just going to stay there.
It'll be storage and car.
Stormwater's not an issue because it's under whatever...
So, so you require, you require a stamp site plan. Incorporating whatever elements are involved there. And I agree with Stephen, that the septic will probably be adequate as, which I guess, and your engineers will be reviewing that with the health department.
Well, it's, it's a three-bedroom system, so.
It's going to have...
That shouldn't be an issue.
I'm sorry? I, I think this is a pre-existing system without problems.
Oh, I was just talking about the site.
Oh, the site plan.
Not really, the disturbance is less than an acre, therefore, there's not a slip involved or anything of that sort. So there really is, nothing near that, right, would typically be revealing.
And the reason we had to do that with the variant pages, because one of the conditions of the variants was that there'd be no stormwater running off-site behind what's, you know, pre, pre-new construction.
And there were issues there with, associated with stormwater runoff that repeatedly was affecting municipal streets and things of that sort too.
Do we already have scheduled the community's public hearing for June 2nd for this application? Do we, have we already, at our last meeting, did we reschedule, we continued this public hearing to June 2nd, the public hearing for Miss Blackwood's project, right?
We did that earlier this evening. We rescheduled this for, at six forty on June 2nd.
We did, oh, good for us. But at the same time, did we authorize you to draft a Part Two and Three of secret?
You're doing that right now.
Oh, we're doing that right now.
And what about archaeology? As soon as, we haven't done anything because we didn't know that we were going to use the building here or not. As soon as we know that we're going to be allowed to, then we'll have the archaeology.
I would assume, what we need is a phase one, just a literature search is all you would need at this point. And generally, that would be part of the approval. But that's not, you know, that's just the literature search.
Why would we do an archaeological search on a space the size of that building?
It's in the Landmark District, they're required of every other project in the Landmark District.
Just for consistency's sake.
I have to be rude, crude and sensitive and say, why doesn't the cemetery do it?
I don't know.
They should be required.
They probably should.
Every hole they did, they should do an archeology. I'm serious, I find that offensive. I know when Neil Kane went through that thing with his place, they wanted archaeological studies and everything else. And right across the street, you're digging holes in it every day and they're not doing any of it.
But we're talking about research here, not here, right?
But it's still a cost to the applicant.
I agree, I agree.
Well, if we do it for one, we do it for all or we don't do it at all.
That's fine.
I mean, that's...
But you get hold off on that until you get your approval.
Yeah. So, right.
I agree.
First of all, could I hear a motion to authorize Art to draft a Part Two and Part Three of the environment assessment form for this project? Well, I can, I'll register. Oh, I'm in favor. Very good. I don't think there's anything else that we require. You'll be putting together what you all need to put together and get it to us.
And the public will have the opportunity at the June 2nd meeting to comment on the materials that come in.
Thank you both very much, we thank all three of you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm hopeful that, I'm hoping to be, sure. This is close to, thanks for checking. I'm in favor.
We'll be, we'll be...